Perfect. Thanks for coming. Call to order. We have a forum. I do not have a chair report to for anything. And seeing that we have all the swim people here, I'm gonna try to get you along with your day. So we're gonna take the presentation from the swim people now to free you guys up so you don't have to sit through the bondage of this meeting. There you go. And so I don't see Barbara. I thought Barbara, oh Barbara, there you are. Great. There you go. The floor is yours. You're welcome to stay.
Well, we appreciate very much what you all do all the every day. I'm so into the fact that we are coming on a day that is certainly of interest to us. But we you do a lot of work for the whole community and we appreciate it. We would also appreciate it, of course, if you would agree with us that the community really wants a pool. The way we know, first of all, we have about 500 active members. Most of them are timers here. We have a great field of soccer. But I don't know if you know, if you remember, about 2001, where many of you were too young. But there was a survey and it was exactly data trails were number one, the lap pool was number two, and dog park was number three, and then four was a dogging trail. Then we did another survey in 2019. So we feel confident right here that if we could build a pool, people will use it. We can have a big noise. The other, you have a big thing to understand, I think, is if you think of a pool, it may be a full complex, but it's called a unit. True, or something with a park, a large park. And what this pool would take less than an acre. It would have a warming pool for for people who need to do that for exercise. It would have lap swimming. It would have children's lessons. It would, it would be able to do a whole bunch of different things with a cover, which would be openable so that I want to cover today, for example, and then there's days when you might want it, but also keep the sound away of people having fun. If we have a, so I just wanted to invite you to to listen to a few other people from Cambria's project. Please ask any questions that you might have. What we are asking for today, and I wrote it down, Stephen told me to say it. He tells me to say something I usually obey. He's suggesting that we ask for a vote to approve in concept a one acre site as part of the updated community park. And with that, Karen.
Hey, everybody. I'm Kerry Cox. I'm VP now by having shown up at a meeting. Cambria's for Aquatics. And so what I want to talk about, first of all, I've been in kind of the pool business for quite a bit of my life in the early stages of life, in my twenties, early thirties. And it just seems logical to me that while you're planning a community park, which, by the way, great. I've heard like disc golf plans and things like that. I think, man, that's just awesome. What a terrific idea. The pool fits in so nicely as a community asset in a community park. It just makes good sense. It's a good place to have it. And you say, well, we got one of those. We got one. We got Shallow Park. What about that? What about the Shallow Pool? Well, we all know the Shallow Pool. Number one, if you're a lap swimmer, you know it's inadequate. Just is. It's a great little resource, but it's not a lap pool. It's small. It's shallow. It's not going. It's open, what seems like a few minutes a year. That really means to me, I live right near there and it's barely open. It leaks. It's got all kinds of problems. It's ancient. It's an ancient facility. And I mean, I don't want to knock the fact that there's a pool. It's great that there's a pool. It's just that its use is very limited. I know they run some lessons there. They're very condensed amount of time. A year round facility, you could teach every kid here in Cambria in San Simeon how to swim, which, if you live by the ocean, just makes sense, right? So that answer is kind of what about channel? It's just not a sufficient kind of resource for the community. What kind of things would this pool offer as part of this community park? Sat in the parking lot just now and started making a list and ran out of time. But if we're talking about recreational swimming, swim lessons for both young and old, by the way, as as Barb mentioned, lap swimming, water aerobics, any other kinds of exercise you can do in a pool, as these folks here have seen them before, doing exercises in the pools, when we swim gold with the hill, just one at Kennedy Club or wherever, we'll take off there. A physical therapy, elderly gravity free exercise, you couldn't do in the water. Post-surgery rehab, scuba lessons, life-saving lessons, which brings up kind of an interesting side note as an employment opportunity for the youth around here, learning to becoming lifeguards. There's huge shortage of lifeguards. I don't know if y'all are aware of that. So teaching kids that skill, Red Cross kinds of skills, water safety instructors. So that's an employment opportunity. Anyway, community events, swim parties, that sort of thing, swim meets. I ran out of time, but but it's just a year-round resource for the entire community, young and old. And would fit in so nicely with all the other sorts of things that I've heard being planned for the park. So that's kind of where I'll leave it and I'll turn it over to whoever's next. Thank you.
My thanks, Kerry. That might be me. I'm John Lynn. I'm I'm not a huge swimmer myself, but I am very supportive of this. And I've been part of this group as a board member for several years. And I just wanted to hit one aspect of it because, as you all know, most of you know, I'm I'm in a business here in town that obviously cares for the community, but moreover, also cares about visitors that come to our community. And I feel that this community pool could be a huge addition for the visitors that come to this community, both people who rent homes in which they stay for an extended period of time, as well as the motel type people who come here often bringing their children and looking for something else to do. And we're aware of this because we get calls. We get feelers over our website asking, where's the community pool? Where's the community pool? My daughter lives in New York City, not the city, but right outside of the city, and she has three children. They're all very active swimmers and divers at their country club there. And when they come here to visit, Annie grew up here, but when she comes here to visit, they are all over this county going to pools elsewhere because we don't have a pool. And I think it stands out, one thing, that we don't have a pool. All the other high school districts in our county have a pool. So what's up? So I would support this and I and I think it's it's something that would help in a lot of ways, but it would also help to augment Cambria as a destination for the visitor ship that comes here. You know.
All right. Good morning, Brigades. I've been a swimmer all my life and still travel to Morrel Bay High School or over to Kennedy, like many of the lap swimmers. But really, what I want to talk about is swimming for kids. I was a former swim instructor and lifeguard, pool manager, swim team coach. And so I was around aquatics a lot as a kid. And I remember becoming a pool manager at Story Park Pool in the city of Alhambra and I was about 20 years old. Actually, these days, illegal to be a pool manager because even then you needed to be 21, but somehow I smoothed through the tracks. On day number two, I think, of opening for the summer, and our system at that pool was to hit a buzzer if there was an emergency out on the pool deck. So I ran out. I'm not sure what the lifeguard was doing, you know, during that time, but there was a boy at the bottom of this pool. I went down and got him. He came up. He was blue. Fortunately, I was teaching lifesaving in WSI in those days, so I knew exactly what to do. And thank God, he came to in 30 seconds or something. So, you know, I've had that incident riveted in my mind ever since in terms of just making sure people that have a swim, particularly kids. So here we are, a couple of people already mentioned it. We have, I think, 500 kids in this district. 75% of them are Hispanic, from what I understand. And I haven't done a forensic survey, but I bet very few of them actually know how to swim, living next to an ocean. So I can see all kinds of possibilities with a pool, just teaching, you know, our our school kids who live here in town how to swim. I've even joked about going back and getting my WSI again and and getting back into teaching swimming. When I taught swimming early on for little more than five-year-olds, we used to separate them into three groups. We call them the rocks, the minnows, and the sharks. So the rocks were definitely afraid of the water, right? So getting their face in the water was kind of a big deal, right? But I think it just, for a lot of really good reasons that have been mentioned, I think, we just need to get a pool and, you know, teach our kids how to swim. Thank you.
If you would like to say a few words, I know you can walk down.
Yes, your name is here.
I'm very part ranger and I got my feet on the job. And I've always been a long time lap swimmer and my kids involved in swimming activities, but I want to represent older people with chronic illnesses because I don't think it's very common. I mean, it is very common, I think. And the benefits of water therapy are enormous. So I kind of switched over from lap swimming, which I can still do occasionally, to aqua exercises, running in the water, that sort of thing, hugely important, I think, for people with chronic illnesses. And I think a huge amount of this community would benefit from that. Right now, I commute with two people to Cresta College so that we can do that. But if we had a local place where we could do that, I think you would see it become hugely popular because people discovered it. Maybe those who haven't tried it before would see the huge benefits for all kinds of chronic pain and inflammation and things. So just want to mention that.
Follow on that, if you'd like.
You just, yeah, I'm using the cane at the moment because my outcry has got aggravated by a fall. I've been recovering just since last August. If I had the ability to go daily to a pool where I didn't have to have weight-bearing exercise, I think I would have progressed a lot better. And the other thing I want to say is I grew up with a community pool. When I was 13, I was able to take lifeguard, life, yeah, lifeguard, junior lifeguard lessons, and I became one. And I would help out people like this gentleman and teach those little ones how to put their face in the water and blow bubbles. And our 13-year-olds could do the same thing. They could get that certificate and they could help us. I think it would give them the thing to do and some of them don't know how. So, yes.
Would you like us to answer?
No. Well, does anybody else have anything they want to add, just off the cuff from the group? All right. Jim, go ahead.
Go ahead, Jim. Is Barbara Tanner around?
Kathy Tanner.
Sorry. I just talked to Barbara.
No. Okay. I think if we have this group again, and it sounds very positive, even though I'm late to the to the meeting, I think we're going to be going really good. But we need to get Kathy Tanner involved, too, in my opinion.
Steve, go ahead. Eve screwed it up because he put you first on the agenda. You didn't realize that you were going to be that early. You might want to comment about the county support, if there is some.
Well, the county, you might say, I think the county feel they they put all the effort in the Shallow Pool. Really, not all that much effort. But, you know, how do they feel? And apparently, the the pool there is is ancient. If you know March Sewell, and she couldn't be here today, she, we have a picture of her, right, when the pool was built. And this during the post, the early post-war. I think it was World War II. Anyhow, that pool has a lot of problems. Doesn't have a dressing room. We teased that if we needed a second skate park, the the pool without water might be kind of fun. It it's very close to the creek and there are some potential issues there, so it's not a good pool. And I, at one point, as you know, we we thought that would be the place and that county was eager to work with us. But as we understood the limits to that space and also how much people wanted to to see exactly the way it was, it made us decide that we needed to find a better.
Julie.
I just want to make a comment. I know what it takes to put this group of people together and to keep momentum and to keep enthusiasm. And I just want to applaud all of you for your continued efforts on making this a priority because it's amazing to see this many Cambrian's in a room.
So I'm pretty sure I actually remember this happening, but you did approach the school district to put a pool behind the high school where there actually is original plans for a pool. And that 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 tank, that didn't happen, obviously.
Well, yeah, without the benefit of the vote, it turned down.
Next flip.
And that's not saying that, because that was a while ago. Has that been reopened with Scott or the school board or anything?
I don't know what kind of drugs I could use to get them to change their mind. No. I I feel that, you know, we've been there a couple of times and it's sort of like going door to door or something. And if you get the door slammed, we've been through a couple of times, you decide that maybe they're telling us what they really think. So the other thing is that the more we look into it, we thought that maybe it isn't the best one for other reasons. And so I'm looking to be part of the potential new community park and we have more members and have more people. So in terms of fundraising, we have people ready to make significant donations that they needed to know we had a place. It's very hard to raise money when you don't have a place to fund it.
So the county has not, like, stepped up to provide any funding for this?
But no.
Which is just so interesting.
Oh, we have an app.
We have an app.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have a place to put it. So we haven't really engaged with the county at at great length about money.
It's the same problem that it would be with anyone else because it, I don't know, if you put yourself in their position, would you, would you put money on the line without having anything going on? It doesn't make sense. So it's kind of a chicken and egg thing.
And then are there other ideas for space or spaces for the pool? Or is it right now you focused maybe on the East Ranch as an alternative or, you know, other buyers in the?
I'm an optimistic person usually. I'll be very frank. I think this is most likely the last possible state.
One of the issues we faced was, can we go buy land around here? And pretty exhaustively searched the area for potential places. And obviously, it raises the fundraising to absorbent levels, you know. I mean, it makes it really hyper. So when this came up, this just seemed like such a serendipitous kind of fit that we wanted to make the most of it.
Do you have a ballpark figure for construction and operations? And will the pool need adjacent? Does it require adjacent bathrooms? Because the, my understanding is the site you're talking about, which would be out of the floodplain, is far from where the current bathrooms are planned.
There's a lot of, the rules are, you know, you have to have potable water and those kinds of things. But the, in terms of what we build around the pool to make it a more pleasant place to swim and learn and do all the stuff about that those decisions will change the price point. But it's, it's, the the land there would not be difficult to build on. It's mostly level. There, there is, the other things you need to build are out there. So it just would, if it's, if it's popular enough, the fundraising will be relatively easy. And if it's, and so if the people want it, it can do good.
And to answer your question, restrooms would be part of it automatically.
Okay, and operational support? That's what I'm thinking. I mean, I used to go to pools. Operational support for it? Is that part of the Cambrians for Aquatics?
It's part of the plan. The fundraising has to include people who work there and people who take small amounts of money for for people who want to swim, maintain it. And we were building a business plan so we can make that better and then get feedback from people on what we've forgotten, what we maybe don't need. But we are pretty far along on understanding it. In fact, in San Juan Islands, there is, I think, a Lopez Island is about our size. It it has about the same amount of people. It has same amount of part-timers and full-timers, all of that. And they are just now recruiting volunteers for the opening of their pool. They've been working on it for about five years. That could be five or six years. They're successful and they're they're an island out there. We are confident we we will be able to to do it, but we need to know where it's going to be in order to take money from any donor.
Would be in doubt.
That's a good way to say it.
Can you go back and give you a bit of the history of when you first started your group?
I started diving here during that period. Your son, your son is far. And I just don't feel sorry for him. I don't know what to do, but we learned what we need to learn through the process. And it's been a grueling process by going off the different directions. The county signed a letter of intent. We were going to build it. The park, it's letter of intent from the county sounded like you could take it to the bank, like many banks can't take it to the bank. So we we grew up a lot as a as a board, as supporters. We were able to gain more and more support and not less and less support. Some ideas, you start out with a good idea and then it wanes. We're proud to say we're growing and we're cheerful. And we know it's a huge undertaking, but we have some amazing people here who make me think it's possible and doable. So I'm still cheerful.
The other question was, in the beginning, when they raised funds for the ranch, that was 2001 or 2002, I can't remember the exact time. 2099, okay, 2099. And I do know that in the beginning, the group of people who were involved, I'm sorry, the group of people who were involved at that time had raised funds for, you know, I think it was 11 or 12 million dollars. And in the beginning, they didn't have a very good funding source and everything, so they had to try a lot of different things to do it. Finally, they, I believe, the conservative, the Land Conservancy paid for part of it. They paid for part of it. The county gave part of it. So that was that. That's how it started. So the West Ranch was considered as an issue, environmentally sensitive area. And the community park was split off to be a sort of a semi-active part of the park. However, there was also surveys made during that time, in the early time, when they were trying to decide what was going to be at the park. Originally, it was because of soccer fields and a dog park. Those are the two things that were at that time fairly popular. The other thing they did is they surveyed the whole neighborhood. And of course, there are a few people on the hilltops, et cetera, who didn't want any noise at all. So we did a noise survey at one point. The, and all of that happened within about a three or four year timeframe. In the meantime, they had originally thought they would have a cell tower on the ranch to raise funds to help tanks. And that was next because of the issue on the West Ranch. So all that process is gone. And finally, they put a community park together. And I believe the first original design was several years ago. I can't remember whether it's eight or 10 years ago. And a community survey was made, and the pole and tennis courts were left out because of all the noise in the area. So anyway, that's sort of what I remember from that time period. So what I'd like to see really is a list of when you started and who you, how you went through the community to build something and just send it to us and let us know how you've done this over the years and what your plans are.
So I couldn't, I maybe, maybe.
No, I'm not. I'm sorry. Don't talk loud and I'm harder to hear.
I couldn't quite hear your question and I want to be sure to answer.
What question was this? Can you develop a kind of a history of your group in trying to get a pool, what you've done so far?
So what I found is that I made friends at the Cookie Club to come up and say, you're the pool lady. How are you doing? You need any help? That I would have ever anticipated. I mean, we, we don't see this as a country club kind of pool. We see this as a people's pool. And we see it as a gathering place, as a as a place for education and fun. And and yet we also see it covered so that the sounds of people doing water aerobics will not be, you can't will be able to hear it from if you live above. And we see ourselves as good neighbors and caring. But we also see that that space, designated park space, it has been. And, you know, I I feel like there's like, obviously, an iron line between the other part of this community ranch, which is the natural untouchable space. And then this space, we're blessed to be able to say, was allocated for public recreation. And so as long as we do that in a responsible way that meets the needs of people, we will be able to raise money. If we did it in a irresponsible way that didn't meet the needs of people, we wouldn't be able to raise the money. And that's where I'm grateful for the challenge of how much it costs, is that we need, we can prove to ourselves that we're popular by getting support and hearing people's options and concerns and making it really not the Cambrians for practice pool, but a true community.
I want to get at the core of what your question is. You're you're asking for a history of what's been done up until now? Is that, is that what you're doing?
Your efforts in trying to get it done over the years in Cambria.
Okay, so I'm one of the newer members of the group. But I've listened to the horror stories. And it's basically been, to me, just a model of perseverance and and belief in the idea that we really need this. I don't know that Bart would be able to even go through the 10 years that she has, she and others here have spent trying to find a location. That's been the key to this whole thing, right? Right from the get-go. Not the need, but trying to find a location. And Shallow Park was almost a, okay? Shallow Park was was almost a done deal. And then really, in response In response to kind of the neighborhood concerns and things you might be aware of, that that didn't happen. And then the high school didn't happen. And so we were at the end of ten years here. We were pretty much going, well. You know, is this a reality or are we done? Were we just smoking here? And then this came up and I heard about the plans that. Julie's talking about and I've seen the skate park thing happen and it's like, oh, we're thinking in terms of recreation and we're thinking in terms of a growing community, we're thinking in terms of youth. It just seems like the right time and the right place. And so that's really, go ahead.
Well, I'm just, I guess I'll round out what I think of Adolf's question. Have you read the Fiskelie Ranch? Environmental report?
Have I read that report? No.
No, most people haven't. It goes on forever. Yosemite, right? It was just a. A huge document of far beyond what it was needed. The but anyway. That's what you would have to replicate to put that type of structure into that area. So the question is, if you do have the public support for it. Rather than spend it on an environmental document. Would you be better off spending it on buying a piece of land that's commercial private or commercial area downtown? There's acres downtown that are there, but they're not cheap. But neither is an environmental document. I think environmental document far exceed the cost of private land.
You're saying that you have to have an environmental document?
You would, you would have to correct the existing environmental document.
And it doesn't preclude. What can go into the allocated space?
So what you would need to do is get. Information from the county that it's consistent with the things that are already allowed. You don't have to do the whole study again. You just need to do.
Okay, that's more that's more clear.
Yeah.
Okay, and. I'm gonna let you speak, but we've come to a half an hour in the meeting. Right? And I'd like to say at this time, the meeting time is the most important thing in my life. Because we're not gonna decide anything today. It's a fine conversation. This is questions for a committee. I'm super stoked. That these two people here are saying that the Fiskalidi Ranch people aren't just slamming that as a big no. Right? That's 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 a huge thing that I'm seeing in this room right now, but let's let's move along. With not that they're saying, but I thought the E I R said no pool, but if they're saying this isn't, Jim, you got?
Steve, if you could take item seven B. Julie has a document and they approached that.
I'm gonna let it go, go.
Yeah, go. Okay, um. I keep nodding at Kitty going, I get it, I get it, because I get it. So there's an E I R, we know this, we do not want to touch the C I R. I mean, we do not want to touch the C I R. What the county, and it would be the county because the county and C C S D are the active applicant of what can happen on these roughly forty five acres. Which we've discovered through our process, fourteen acres. Right? Because you've got what we call passive recreation. And we've got the definition on that, thank you. I I got a better definition, so I feel better about it. Passive recreation is really trails, guys, trails. So it's not a pool, it's not frisbee golf, it is. Extending trails. So there is passive recreation and there is what we can call really. Active recreation, which is roughly fourteen acres around the middle. Okay? Without going into the definition of those exact lines. And you said it very well, Barbara, as far as being, you know, respectful to the process and and respectful to all that is the definition between the. West and East Ranch. When we talk about how to use that fourteen acres in recreation, it would require. The district to want to file with the county essentially a land use. Permit application. Which would then say back in the day when we did. This big plan, it was originally designated for soccer fields, baseball fields, and this was supposed to go here and that was supposed to go there. And of course, we all know here we are twenty years later. And I'm even coloring my hair. Twenty years later and we have nothing out there besides the dog park and the bathrooms that are coming potentially that are out to permit right now. And a parking lot, we know this. So that land use permit would then say to the county. We would like to do this instead of that. And what do you think? So in the case, I'm just gonna use frisbee golf, right? Disc golf as an example. We don't want to use it for a soccer field, we want to use it for nine holes of disc ball. How does the county feel about that? What do we need to do? And make. Determinations from there. This is a huge ask, guys, in the sense of the use of this land. And the only reason I say that is we've done the due diligence over the last four months in particular. The complexion of our community has changed dramatically from the time all of that took place to today. And what we've discovered through the process is there are a lot of neighbors in this area. That are very adamant about no noise. And when I mean no noise, I mean no noise, like they would prefer the space to be left open space. And so there's that respectful dance.
The only part of that dance is that the real music behind the dance is how was it so influential?
I totally agree, Barbara. You got my a hundred percent.
So so that takes communication because. You know, we've all learned, every I bet everybody in this room has learned that. Just because you want it doesn't mean that you need to happen.
Correct.
However, if a lot of people want something and if it's for the health. Safety and it has other. Good reasons to happen, then that space happens to be. Not only a good space for it with parking and I mean, there's already. If you're living above a dog park and with a large parking zone right below you, it's already becoming a community park. It's not.
I totally agree. The key word is recreation.
Julie, would you be, allow me to help you be a little more brief?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Well, the the next step is to go to the county and say, is. Is this idea substantially compliant with that, with the permit that they gave us? Given that. Then we can come back and talk about it. But if and the application is here. The general manager would need to sign it. The county even said maybe you even asked for a. Waiver of the fee. So that's the next step and I think. So rather than we address that again later on in the agenda, but I think as far as the pool goes.
Yeah, well, because we're just taking the presentation, we're not gonna take a vote on anything today. Perfect. And then we would encourage you to come back. Barbara, we'll stay in touch. I can put you on every month. We can just, you know, the more you're here and telling us about what's going on, the better. Anybody else got anything on that topic before the rest of the C C S D staff has other things to do with their lives? All right, thank you very much. I appreciate you guys. That's good work. All right, maybe member reports. Anybody have any committee member?
We got a letter of substantial compliance.
Yeah, that's what the chip said. That's what we had to do for the horse. And there were. Willions of conditions that went with that letter. Like the entire. It's not just, go ahead, have a good time.
But it did not say, they did not say. Is it substantially compliant?
Right. Okay.
And maybe like.
Yes, I was, yes, yes, there we go. No, and I I didn't want to do that in front of that whole group. You guys could move closer if you want. You don't have to be far away.
We don't buy it.
Yeah. Perfect. All right. So welcome to the meeting, everybody. We don't really have any committee member reports, but let's go around and introduce ourselves. Mister Nixon is now our alternate. Whatever that means, that's our own little way of making sure we all got it for him. And Shannon Sutherland is our new member of the board. And if you have anything you'd like to say, we'd love to hear it.
I'm happy to be here, I think. So I'm happy to be here and. The the issues that this commission or. Takes up are very important to the community and certainly very important to Fiskalie Ranch Preserve. And I hope to contribute as I can to the discussions for any of the issues that arise.
Steve, my 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 suggestion.
Yeah, go ahead.
That's Kitty.
Yeah, you want to introduce ourselves? Go ahead, let's do it.
I'm Kitty Conley. I'm the executive director of Friends of Fiskalini Ranch Preserve and an ex officio medic of that commission.
I'm Adolf Potenzio, member of the board.
Kurt Johansson.
Stephen F. Commissioner.
Shannon Sutherland, I guess I'm a commissioner.
Yeah.
Jim Behringer, I'm a commissioner.
And Julie Amade, I am state Cambrian representative and. Rose Adhot Brett for everything on going on on East Ranch.
Everybody else, go ahead.
Dick Clark, Community Council.
Oh, David Pearson.
There you go.
Michael Thomas.
Haley Dodson, Administrative Analyst with the C C S D.
Matthew Macklin, General Manager.
There you go, all right. Awesome. All right. So are there any committee reports, Julie? Do you have anything?
Kitty first.
Well, those are the ex officio reports. Is that what you're gonna report on? Yeah, we don't have anything else. Oh, permit, you had something you want.
Yeah, I just uh. I also have a. Member of the North Coast Advisory Commission. Counsel and the. One thing I've been, I'm the transportation person, I'm the only one on it, but I'm still the assistant. And that thing, the. Got it, I've been having, we're closing two trails. One is from Eaton Drive down to Tin City as a. A way to get for replace the sidewalk that's Mission Bird Drive in a better place, historic stagecoach route and so forth. And I've been sort of harping it to a crowd of nobody and for a long time. And then there's also. A underneath, I want to go underneath the bridge on Highway One, right by the. At the first span, there's about a ten foot opening that you can put a railing quite easily. It's already there, it's just that you can't get to it by the sides, but. They would have to be leveled and it's also under the jurisdiction of about forty five minute, you know, different agencies. Including it's owned by K D O or Cal, Cal Branch. California. So I have broached this because we have federal money coming next year and they've got a safe street program that they're trying to wind up and I'm trying to get interest in that. Long story short, there is interest in being helped by the. Slow con. And slow con is, you know, I'm saying, yeah, say something, just say, somebody say something, we'll we'll respond. And I did, and there was interest in these two projects. The. Which I was kind of surprised, you guys said, well, you know, I don't know if they want to understand, they might want to replace that bridge sometime. And it has to do with the flood plain and backflow from the coast. So there is some, there, I'm going to apply purpose and need on these things. And then kind of go in both directions, but I just wanted to inform that. The but he did say that the one, and I was sent the. County write up of their proposed sidewalk thing and they have four proposals going from like five hundred thousand down to. Or three hundred thousand and they took the cheapest one naturally, this was a proposing. And it's not much. It's what you have there in some spots with a four foot walkway, but the weed's gonna come down to, you know, twelve inches. And that's kind of the condition of what they will end up with. They're not really doing most, but at least he said, if you put in your preferred, you know, your request. It will it act as to spur the activity of a sidewalk on. Bird Drive and it's a big deal because they would have to go down all across, make a path all the way down to their bridge and that that is a lot. And the important thing he said is if it's outside the right way, then we consider it park work. And they might fund it, but we'd have to maintain it and that's not a desirable thing. They build it in the right way. It may not be exactly what we want, but at least they maintain it for inside, it falls off the side of the hill. So those those two things are in the future somewhere. Maybe. That's it.
Thank you. Those are, those are two brilliant trails that we have been. Looking at for a hundred years.
Yeah, so Eaton to Tin City was a trail that we used to the junior high every day to get down to Bonna Jans. So it was a trail until it got fenced off.
It does go up to the end.
And after multiple kids got hit on Burton on our bikes, multiple of us. That's the way we started cutting down to make it safe to get downtown. So. And the three most dangerous places to get to in our whole town are our three school sites. So at least that would make one of them easier to get to.
And tell me of the other two. While the record, I'll look at making a proposal on them.
Yeah, I definitely want to work on this.
I'm confused on committee, so I mean, we've got more to talk about, but it's kind of down here in regular business.
Yeah, I, that's just our loosey goosey way of listening to whatever term it's been doing. Perfect. And that's a great thing. Slow con sitting there with all that ability to do stuff and. Nice work. All right, anybody else? Good, seeing none. Friends of the Fiskalini Ranch Report, Kitty.
Okay, so we've been doing a lot of weeding. Because of the rain, so the weeding is ongoing, not so much trail maintenance. The school programs are on break, but the design programs are going strong. We had a volunteer appreciation party. In May for about a hundred people came. Which was more people than we thought would fit in the space, but it was really lovely. And far fewer than the number of people we need to thank, but at least some people. The construction permit for the boardwalk should be submitted this week to the county. As Jim rightly pointed out, before we did that, we had to get a letter of substantial compliance with the environmental documents. Which was a big deal. It's a big deal because if it goes badly. And you still want to do it, it can be horrendous amount of money to get that through. So luckily that worked.
Who who issues that?
The county.
The county, so they.
The county in this case. Issue was the applicant for the coastal development permit. So they have the ability to issue. Substantial compliance under the coastal development permit without going to.
Is it just?
It's like gold.
It's like a state architect versus county.
Is this a subject finding? They just write you a letter, I guess.
Yeah, a letter with pages and pages of things that make it compliant.
Are you saying that would be the same kind of procedure for the pool?
Everything that goes on the east ranch, you're gonna need to do that. So there's lots of issues about sound and setbacks and. And all of that.
And sound is not defined as a zero, by the way.
Yeah, I do definitely want to like continue to to say that we need to balance people living, recreating and having fun against people who come here to die quietly, like. There's God.
No, 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 there's. I just want to make sure that like we keep saying. Heard it's recreation, I mean that.
Another thing, Carlos Mendoza and I met last week or the week before with the coastal, California Coastal Conservancy. Which is different from the coastal commission. The coastal conservancy is a state agency that has tons of money that they use to support. Projects, I believe they gave five million dollars towards purchasing the ranch. So they were a huge part of purchasing the ranch. They paid for the boardwalk trail. The bluff trail. The boardwalk and the trail, although it's been upgraded since then. They now have. Something along the lines of, I don't know. An untold amount of money to respond to. Rising sea level and climate change. So Carlos had presented several ideas to them and. Much our surprise, the next day there, they wrote back and said, hey, we'll pay for all the planning and. Engineering and everything to move the bluff trail away from the bluff. Which is gonna have to happen eventually, but. If that project, if we. Go through with that project, the planning phase of that, that means the project will then be shovel ready. Those magic words. In twenty twenty seven, when. The obligation of C C S D to maintain the bluff trail expires. the obligation of CCSD to maintain the bluff trail expires and the coastal conservancy once again could pay for change to the bluff trail. So this was, I mean, we just went, it was an online Zoom. You'd think nothing's going to happen. And then we went to this like little chat room and then he's talking about tens, tens of thousands. I don't know how much money it'll cost for an erosion study for all of that. So that was really fabulous news. So I'm, I don't want to let that ball drop. Because moving the bluff trail is going to be super expensive, but better than to move the bluff trail than have people fall.
Yeah. And then have it go away.
Yeah, that's not good. Swallow to the ocean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, great. Any questions for Kitty? All right, I'm seeing none. We're moving on. Skate Cambria, Jude, what do you got?
Okay, I'm bringing up to speed on our participation in the San Luis area really quick. And then where we're at, the grant, which is super critical. Went through, finished up Monster Skate Series, which is the largest skate series within Slow County. We participated in two parks, Los Osos, and of course, the big one at the end at San Luis Obispo. A lot of fun. Some of our kids competed, but we were Skate Cambria strong that day. And last weekend was Skate Safari in collaboration with Shebang. This is a very big deal for Slow County. It's a large concert venue that took place. Shebang and Skate Safari had to be moved because of some weather contentions. And that took place all day last Saturday. We were there again. Skate Cambria is strong. When we walked in, people were like, Skate Cambria. I mean, I cannot stress enough how this entire coastline is so excited about this park because it's part of a larger community. It's not, often people are like, well, there are no, not enough kids in Cambria to support a skate park. This park is not just for the kids of, yes, it is for the kids of our community. It is for the tourists that come to our community and it is for the greater good of this coastal area. And so we are very well recognized and, and the arms just continue to embrace us. So we're super thankful for that. But talking about arms that embrace us, we had a unanimous vote from our CCSD Board of Directors to move the grant application forward. That was a monumental day. Maybe just in my mind, but I think it actually was in Cambria history for one of being the larger grants that CCSD has participated in. There are no guarantees, like everything in life, but we are absolutely optimistic with this grant. And it is in the process and doing what it needs to do. And I'd like to thank, of course, our new general manager at Haley. On the other hand, that have played a very important part in getting the grant prepared and submitted and continuing to be watched over as it's looked at. We also have another grant that is currently submitted and up for review. I mentioned it last time I was here. And that's the Tony Hawk Skate Park Project Grant. We don't know how much that grant's for. It could be anywhere from ten thousand to a hundred thousand. It will be reviewed roughly in the fall. It's done by their board of directors. We did just see Tony Hawk, one of our core people within our group was down in industry in Los Angeles at an event. He's aware personally, although his hands aren't directly involved in his own foundation, he's got a board of directors to do that. He knows this project. So our fingers are crossed on some additional funding coming in from the skate park project. And we will continue to front raise and of course you'll see us at Pine Dorado. We don't think we'll be coming out as large as we did last year because I think that almost gave me a heart attack having a skate ramp on a moving flatbed. In fact, I know it gave me a heart attack. But you will see us at Pine Dorado as well. So there you go.
Thank you. Any questions for Julie? Beautiful. Seeing none. We're going to move on. Public comment. Anybody from the public have something important they want to share with us? Are there any written public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the presentations. Where are we at with disc golf, Julie?
Okay, I get to go again. Kermit may want to chime in on this and so will Jim. We do, I would like to say to the, I'd like to start by saying to the community at large, we have a public meeting. We, these are not little meetings. These are meant for you. Please come. It is Saturday morning at nine AM. The Cambria Chamber of Commerce has been very generous to allow us to continue to have our meetings there consistently. Come to the meeting. Let us know how you feel. Give us your comments. We are actively moving towards a proper presentation for CCSD in regards to the Frisbee Golf, Disc Golf. We have taken steps, of course, by bringing in a designer who has given us a rough idea of cost. We're looking at nine holes. Jim and I have met with the county. We have a pretty good understanding of what would be required on behalf of CCSD. Again, with the land use permit to ask about the fourteen acres, how they were assigned and how we might need to use that land a little differently. We have work to do. But we also have the funding to take care of the nine hole. Now, does the funding mean future operation and maintenance? Don't have that yet because we don't know exactly where it's going, but nine holes baskets. I can't speculate on the cost, but it's certainly not going to be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars on operation and maintenance on taking care of Frisbee Disc Golf. I was actually driving on the backside of Royal Bay by the golf course, and I didn't even realize there's a church right there that has Frisbee Disc Golf. And I looked over, do you know what I'm talking about? Right there on the corner? I looked over and I was like, wow, that's a perfect example of low impact. They probably got there out there on a Sunday afternoon and their congregation, I don't know, I'm making assumptions, but in nine holes and baskets. So we're very excited to at least get something that's low impact and visual. We talked about the bathroom needing to be there first. So that's it. That's kind of our update. We're moving in the right direction. And there's no question that we clearly understand what can and cannot be done in that space and what we need to do in concert with the district in order for it to be a reality. But we're not coming to the table without money. So that kind of makes that a little bit of an easier conversation because you've already got some funding. Yeah. Any questions? Want to add in anything, Jim? Did I go too long?
No.
Okay, good.
I say what I'm planning on.
Kermit, are you there? All right, perfect. Facilities and Resources Report.
Maybe the general manager can not have one. So we're in some leadership transitions at the moment.
Are you at liberty to say?
We all know.
Well, no, I just heard when I walked in the room and was just like, oh, okay.
Yeah, I think it's been announced. It's not an employee action. You know, it's not, not related to anything in terms of personal actions. But Carlos Mendoza did submit his resignation. And so we are in the active recruitment for Facilities and Resources Manager, and that's happening rapidly.
Do you need a college education?
So we're in discussions on changing the position description and, you know.
Yeah, Haley, I'm going to do it.
So I would like to see some of the changes in terms of the qualifications for this position because there's so much that goes into budget management, grant writing, you know, working with the county. And so I'm thinking about changing that position description a little bit to include a bachelor's degree in some type of management, administration and or forestry, landscaping, landscape management. Was kinesiology major a couple? I can't remember what some of the majors they have there in regards to that, but landscape architecture, things of that nature. So I think that would be a good move for us as we, as we try to change the way we do things as an organization.
I'm sorry. I thought the job was already advertised. You're going to change the description after advertising it?
I may say.
Okay. Okay. It's like, that's a little tricky.
Yeah, you know, I don't know. So we've received a few applications, but we may change it to a bachelor's degree preferred. You know, and talk with the, the, the board in terms of what we're looking for. I thought, excuse me, the hiring board, that is.
I think the suggestion would be refuse his resignation. Tell him. Don't accept him because he was fantastic.
No, I agree. It's a big loss to the organization.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Moving on. Perfect. Consent agenda and approval to accept the minutes.
I'm moving, so I'm moving.
Second home favor of the minutes being accepted. Say aye.
Aye.
There you go. Regular business in regards to the code. Has everybody read the coastal conservancy letter? Right? Do we want to talk about that?
Why did we get it?
I don't know why we got it. Yeah, I don't know why we got it either.
It's really.
Yes, it's.
Well, it's there because we haven't done anything about it. And I like Laura and Crosby Schwartz. And what they're saying is, hey, this thing still exists. We're an open space commission. They would like us to pay a little bit more attention to the open space in the community.
Which I totally agree.
Which I agree with, right? And because we hear Kitty talking about the coastal conservancy, right? This is the same project and it was wrapped up in the water thing and the build out reduction and the EDUs or whatever it was. But nonetheless, it's still here. Those lots exist. They cost us money. And we don't have a plan necessarily for.
I don't think we've known the magnitude of what we've got.
Well, we, I believe there's a new map that's been created.
Put that on the agenda for next week or next meeting and have the map show up. And let's discuss this thing because frankly, want to do it with the, the fire presentation group because it's wildfire is.
It's wrapped up in that.
Wrapped up in that. It's wrapped up in, in the maintenance costs that of liability and so forth. So that has to be a big budget item inside where Carlos used to be. He had nothing except chainsaws to, to deal with.
Yeah.
But they've done, we've got a couple of weeds, we're going to do these things. So that is a, a big dog to bite us. My question is, where did all the money for the maintenance go? And how did we eat up all that stuff? So we're going to have to find a way to fund that. And if you look at our, our things that they tell us to do. Because that's the next one is statement of personal authority is where to, the things that guide us is access existing resource and gather information regarding parts of open space recreation. Need to commit that one. But the other one is create plans or be in the deep skinny with the bounds of current potential resources. Anticipate needed funding for proposed actions and identify potential sources and recommend plans of action. So we're supposed to be the spark for what is it we do on that? And I think Crosby is right. We are open space. And that's a big chunk of open space out there with weeds growing on it every day, waiting for it to dry and get a fire.
I'm moving to have David Pearson give us a report on the next, next month on the.
Next one, yeah.
Right now.
On those lots? Are you talking about fire clearance on those lots? CCSD does that every year.
They do, but there's some things we don't touch, like Fern Canyon is, is a beautiful example of just kind of a wilderness brush field that houses butt up to that we don't.
But most of those lots they do clearance on. So maybe you want to report on the things.
I'd be happy to hear anything that's.
Because.
Yeah, I would like just to see the map of what it is, our actual open spaces are.
And I read it. And I'd like to just even learn more about what we can do, what we need to do, you know, what this is. So I mean, I don't understand, but that's it.
So who's going to, who's going to do that? Who's going to help us with that?
That would be.
Carlos has a map of all of those. CCSD.
Well, here he's gone.
Yeah, he only just.
So you want to see there. Carlos is the guy that shows us. He can ask where, which ones they actively maintain, which ones.
What's that?
We need someone to champion putting all the.
Yeah, I, I feel like because we don't have a resource guy right now that we can wait. I mean, this has been waiting for years. It won't hurt us to put us off a couple of months. But I think we should just have it on our radar or something that we want to try to sink our teeth into. Right? Put it with a little asterisk down at the bottom of the page.
So can I?
Yes.
Are we looking at fire clearance, which, or are we looking at recreation on those lots?
We're both, both just, well, because they're open.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because community gardens, there's.
Yeah, right, right, right. But, but fire clearance seems to be outside of the, our mission on pros.
Yeah.
So we get fire clearance because there are other organizations, other parts of CCSD that do that.
No, wait a minute. They, I don't know if anybody's doing it. Are you guys doing it?
The fire department has a list of all the lots that need to be cleared and.
Hear that from them and see what they're doing on it.
Come to the fire, come to the, this is what we talk about it, the Fire Safe Focus Group. That's what happens at Fire Safe.
I don't need to go to another meeting. So good question, but I would, I'd like to.
That was.
Put together something so that we have a little bit more visibility into what we're talking about here. Maps, everything. So I volunteered to do.
Yeah.
If you can introduce her to Carlos's map and you guys get together and come up with this, a little talk next month. So I'm, so I'm moving.
Okay. Go ahead. Yeah, on, on the wall in the upper arm shop, the one that got flooded twice, you know, but on the wall, there, you know, there is this map. It's the old. There is a new, the guys marked that up. So.
I think my brother made the maps. I apologize. Go right to the source.
And, and I, I've heard that there's, the update is imminent. I, when I, whatever communication that was a couple of months ago, I communicated that I'm, I want to buy a copy of that map. I've got a place. I'm going to put it in my garage. So that's, that's coming, but today in, you know, in the shop.
So in wrapping our heads around that, there's a cost of possessing that that costs the district to maintain those. Is there more than just the fire hazard cost to maintaining those lots that we don't see?
I think the, the tree clearing.
And what about trees if they fall from the lot on?
Okay, so that's not fire and that's maintenance. But yeah. Anyway, there we go.
Well, just, just question. I guess most of you know now that a lot of the insurance companies pulled out of camera.
Yeah, yeah.
So I guess really, if our focus basically has to give us some guidance on what we might do in order to avoid situation and get our insurance.
Well. Focus group has done a lot of research into that. And I can, in presentation, if anybody got what I know about that, it's not just Cambria.
The whole state.
What I would like to look at is the vamp concentration, we need longer commuter trails. And if we own some lands that can be opened up and by putting a trail into it and providing a fire break and an emergency truck access through it would make sense that a multipurpose trail would serve us well on some of these things. So I think there's a big need for us to really kind of glance and see if there's anything there. Like you guys were doing work on the Coverdale Ranch, I think some time ago, and that's another one where we'd be nice to connect from up through the cemetery up through, all the way up to the state park, San Sibian State Park up there.
Another trail we used to have.
I think we used to have stuff like that. And there is in our, in our recreation plan, the trail allude to those locations, but nothing specific. It's private land. So we ought to be able to pick out some recreation aspects out of there as well and utilize some of that stuff because Fern Canyon is good. But really what it needs is a big ten foot wide path down there that, that bright truck can run down and spray water if it needs to. If something gets out of hand, instead of having to send somebody in with a.
Same thing with the Ramsey corridor.
Yeah, same, same issue. Try to stop it at the base or get it, get a line in at the base already prepared with access. So there's things that should be done.
Okay, are we good there?
Good.
All right, moving on. That takes us into the East Ranch Site Assessment. Julie, have we already covered that?
Yeah, but I, I just want to, because of the pool presentation, you know, I one thing I think we've all learned is the commitment of time and what that takes away from our families and other things that are important to us. And this group, of course, came with tremendous enthusiasm. I'm not here to be the person to squash it. I'm all about recreation. I just want to give them realistic expectations on this particular piece of land. And a pool is a huge, huge infrastructure. I'll leave it there. I'm not on board. I don't have a vote. I'm just an ex officio in the sense of what we've explored in regards to already East Ranch Site Assessment. And again, just talking about low impact recreation, exercise circuits, nine hole Frisbee Disc Golf has been quite challenging when it comes to public pushback. And I don't have a better.
How upset you can make people.
Right. And so the idea of coming in with. Right. And so the idea of coming in with bulldozers and concrete. I, I think this is a really, really difficult conversation. I just want to be realistic to set them up realistically for their time commitments and energy and enthusiasm.
I, I have a suggestion that we continue for the county with one of these applications on low impact activities. And explore the opportunity to do another application for the higher impact issue and see what the county's guidance gives us. So rather than do two, do one, do two. That would be my.
We haven't gone to the county with the frisbee golf application yet.
Well, we've gone to the county. Jim and I met with the county, um, went through understanding what it all looks like, what we need to do. We're there now. We're ready to be able to, I mean, we have enough with what's come back from Leonard, what he's given us. Um, this isn't, you know, one of the questions is, does it have to go out to RFP, things like, I mean, this isn't a large, difficult infrastructure. So.
And we got some definitions on terminology too, correct?
Correct. And so it really is at a point where we could take this to our general manager. Sit with him on a land use application and it, and the cost is like six or seven hundred dollars, which brings me to the next thing I want to talk about. Get at least the application in for them to go through a point of discovery on whether or not, you know, they, this would be acceptable to, again, not do this and do this. Not do this and do this. I think the other thing we need to talk about is at least mitigating some type of community soccer field. I'm not talking about bringing in bull posts that are permanent, but mitigating no gophers. Um, some type of open field where you can fly a kite or kick a ball. Something, you can't go out there right now and be safe in kicking a ball.
I'm sorry, I don't know what you mean by mitigating a field.
Just an open space. No gophers. Turf, building to me, creating. I'm talking about taking natural, organic, the way the land looks.
No, no, I understand what a soccer field is and what you're talking about, but I just don't really, mitigation is usually something you do to offset some other harm. So I'm not sure.
That was probably a bad word. What she said is get rid of the gopher.
And we'll have so much money in Cameron's, we can sell that.
I, I think what we're talking about is can, can we mow the weeds weekly?
Field in order to fill in the gulf. routinely, you're probably not gonna get rid of the gophers, but you do the same thing the school districts do and you drag it. So at least.
A usable area of space that can be used. Not breaking your ankle.
No, I'm, I think it's a great idea.
I keep referring to it as creating a meadow.
Yeah.
Where I can run with my bare feet and fly my kite.
One quick thing, it was pretty clear right away that it wasn't development. They weren't. They weren't saying development. They, you know, we put a little post, post in the ground. That wasn't development in their opinion. So you didn't have to get a permit actually. And in the, but that's initial assessment. We gotta have them go and.
Plus, I want to see what the process is so we know what it is.
But again, this is not an expensive process. It's like six or seven hundred dollars. Um, we can actually submit what we already have from the designer. So that it gives them enough to understand where we're going with it. Uh, we're not looking for elevations. They're not looking for any of that. They're just trying to assess what our thinking is as far as what that active recreation would be.
That's super great news.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay, Haley, future agenda.
We didn't pitch last one. The bottom of the last minutes. Uh, we have three items for future agenda. And it's discussion of pros submitted goals rejected rewritten by CCSD board. Where, where, where are they? What are they? We've never recovered. I don't even know why we, we got them, because we have our sort of mission statement here. But didn't the board write us some goals of, you know, we wrote, we wrote them what we wanted to do and they wrote back or something.
What's, what they said Herman, CCSD tasked us with, go out to the community and find out from the community what it is they want. And that's where this initial list came from.
They spent hours doing the grammar on this. We've never seen the grammar, that's all.
Well, it's in the strategic plans.
Results of meeting with the county and restoration we did there. Situation of, of East Gulf disreview considered. We just have, if we put it on the agenda of, on the things for future agenda on the minutes. It'd be nice to see them show up on this agenda.
Well, I know it's one other thing too, reading the past minutes. Um, there was someone was gonna look into uh, social media and the require or the limitations and requirements for doing social media for, you know, so the pros can be out there and get into the public a little bit more. Um, so he was Amy, is that her name? But that was something that was an action item that is now dropped. It's something I think we need to pick back up.
I think we need to drop it. I don't think we, we, we have a web, CCSD has a website. We can refer people to official information. And an interaction on a Facebook page is not in my opinion, is, is, is not our responsibility. Our responsibility is to make sure that our website has accurate single information. Somebody wants to make a comment on it, they can make a comment on their website, but as far as it going on next door or something is not professional.
Yeah, they do. I read about that. It's to know what it was. So that's what Amy was gonna look into.
Yeah, there's basically.
Is that a policy? That's easy. The only reason it stood out to me is because we do struggle not just the CCSD, but as a community, we struggle getting the word out about anything. Um, I think that when we started to do the collecting signatures for the um, East Ranch and the proposed ideas that came up with, trying to get the word out was really tough. Next door is a, just a heinous place to try to get the word out, but we can at least use Instagram and, and Facebook to tell people what we're, what is being worked on and what meetings are happening.
So we communicate more on that. So I'm sending out emails and biweekly newsletters that I'm including a bunch of information in. And wars to come on that. And so the next one is this next Friday. So if you want to submit updates on what we're doing, and I can frame that from the overall letter, and we can blast that out and that's reaching a lot of people.
Yeah, and I do post the pros agenda um, on Nextdoor, Facebook and Instagram. Every time you guys hold a meeting, I'm posting that. With the ad hoc? I don't have the ad hoc information.
Okay, so that's the only reason this all came up.
Yeah, cause the ad hoc really isn't subject to all the same stuff everybody else is. And then you guys are like, hey, can we tell people we got a disc golf meeting? No, only he can do it. Yeah, no.
We'll blast that information out. And we, that letter that goes out via email also goes out on Facebook, Nextdoor.
Instagram.
Instagram.
Website.
So there's a way to get.
Okay, I see. I haven't seen it. Just wanted to put it on chat, on the agenda so we.
All right. So Haley, what stuff do you have written down for the agenda next month? Do you have anything written down?
Just social media and it looks like pros goals came off. What do you want to back on?
Let's postpone that until everybody gets a little bit more up to speed and you have more things to do.
What about the open space aspect?
Yeah, we want to do that. That was.
Yeah, cause I really want to like put together at least some information about it. So we put it back.
So that would, that'd be about the only thing I have is.
Oh, you're talking about the map and all that kind of stuff?
Okay, responsibilities as a commission.
I'll be ready to share something.
Yeah.
This is gonna be a rough transition period in a short month to try to figure out. How to read.
We don't have a meeting in July, so we will be meeting again in August.
August. Oh, we don't have a July meeting? Okay, so we'll meet in August and we can. Listen, they haven't wrapped their head around this in the twenty years before you, so don't think you're gonna get.
I've got one other item, it's really important. Um, we're getting ready, of course. On fiscal to do. And so there's nineteen thousand dollars and um, I'd like to know what we're doing with the nineteen thousand dollars because I am always first in line to be able to say, I'm happy to take it, but please don't hand it back. We did it last year, went straight back to CCSD. So uh, here we are again. Do we have a timeline?
I move that we um, suggest to the um, board, the board that they add the nineteen thousand that we haven't spent this year to the budget for next year.
Haven't we done this two years in a row now where we have spent, well, seventeen, we spent two or something or? Do you guys see money in a budget that we have for us somewhere or no?
I'm sure we do. I'm sure we do. I can connect with Denise.
Yeah, and let's figure out.
Do they can split it up or?
Well, I, we didn't spend it one, you know, we don't like spending money on just whatever. And so it kind of sits there and Carlos cleans up all those things every year and we kind of.
We can spend six hundred right.
Well, I think printing the map might be.
Oh, is it?
It's supposed to be enormous, like a wall long to.
Yeah, so let's spend, let's spend our money on that.
But it would be great to see.
Let's just spend it real.
Well, it's, we don't have an action item. I don't think we can spend the money now, but let's bring it back in August and.
Next fiscal year.
Right.
Oh.
Which is why I'm bringing it up right now.
So, so, so just adding the money, nineteen thousand dollars be encumbered and put into your budget for next year.
Encumbered is a good word.
We have planned for it.
Take an action item on that?
I don't think so, but we can talk to Denise.
Talk to Denise.
But there's last year and this year. So there's actually. You mean this year and next year?
This year, next year.
Well, we encumbered last year's too. I'm sure it was too, yeah, but we tried, right?
Well, the idea is we can, we have essentially spent this seven hundred dollars and we, we can say that we will dedicate, we will pay for the map when the map bill comes in, using money from this year.
How about you send me an email with your wishes. I've put that to Denise and I can get you an answer within the next twenty four hours.
Can you do any kind of votes?
Besides that, we can do a quick zoom.
We have a special meeting?
And have a special meeting.
Yeah, you could do a special meeting.
You have agendas, cause we're in the brown act here.
Yeah.
Have to be agenda.
Yeah, so we'll get it. So if we can get some details on what we're, we're looking to do.
Can you tell him last Haley, I'm like, I don't know, I've worked myself back into a circle.
She's got it. A special meeting at a date unspecified, unspecified regarding the budget.
Cause the fiscal year ends in July. End of July. We gotta do it in the next couple of weeks then?
Yes.
Can we, can we not buy some picnic benches or something that's a visual contribution on behalf of pros? I mean, I'm just.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't think we can, well, I think it's a good idea, but I don't think we can do that.
If you have that special meeting.
We could.
And then you vote on it there.
I'm desperately dying for visual, actual things that we can see.
What we want to announce on some sort of meeting.
Other than a map, maybe, right?
And a map. I mean, can we, can we just maybe aspire to get more picnic benches?
Regardless of that, we have to do it at a special meeting. We've come to the conclusion, we can't do it here. So are you gonna schedule a special meeting?
I can. Why don't you guys decide on the date and time?
That sounds difficult.
Do it soon, as soon as, how much notice do you need for the meeting? Um, I need to note about twelve within twenty four hours, but I obviously need to build an agenda packet for that. Okay. Right.
It's not about, about the fifteenth, so too soon. Oh, no, I can't do.
Let me look at the availability of that call. You have a board meeting that day from one to four.
We're gonna talk about the budget.
Right.
How about the?
Why not next week?
Posting the fifteenth agenda. Thursday.
Thursday, the week before?
No, this Thursday.
This Thursday.
Well, that's. Twenty four hours, that's all you need. And then to build the agenda.
I mean, we have a special board meeting Thursday. What in the morning?
This Thursday.
Oh, this Thursday? Two days from now.
That works for me.
Sure. I won't be here, but it's okay.
Can we, is it possible to do things in the afternoon or do we have to do everything?
Morning's okay. Well, I'm just an old, so.
I'm feeling the same.
Can we do it virtually or do we have to do it here?
We have to do it here unfortunately.
Amber, okay, so how about Thursday morning? Ten o'clock.
There is a line item in the existing CCSD budget for, this for pros to do something.
Yeah.
Right. And it, and it is not a differentiated line item, materials, consultants.
Anything.
Anything.
I just want to spend the money.
So if we want to do it on Thursday. Sorry, but our, our calendar and resources are pinned, so it has to be around eight o'clock in the morning.
That's fine.
And then, and then we have to. Agenda review or other board meetings. And Haley has to manage all that.
Yeah, but that's it.
Decent trash cans are very, I was gonna bring that up, it's very expensive. So between now and beginning of tomorrow, we're gonna have an agenda packet prepared. Are we just gonna have the one item on the agenda? Can we not do the minutes from this one or are we allowed to do that?
We don't need to do the minutes, cause it's a special meeting.
Minutes won't be ready.
Trash cans.
I was gonna bring a trash cans kitty. I think trash cans.
Picnic tables. I, I'd get some trees.
Trees are great. Love that too.
Are we gonna try to spend all nineteen thousand?
Spend it, no. That, that would be.
Grew?
Yeah, I think that would be gratuitous, but you know, some things that makes the East Ranch better would be.
And we're gonna put some money in, in the application.
Seven hundred to start moving forward so that we can understand.
Let's go Thursday morning, eight o'clock. They need eight o'clock. They gotta. Agenda reviews, we're already filling them with this.
And, and not to turn the heat up even further, but anyone's gonna need that agenda today.
Yeah, for posting.
For posting tomorrow by eight AM. So we're talking like a mad sprint till five PM.
The fiscal year ends at the end of thirty.
Correct. This is why I'm bringing.
And they're bringing up. Next Thursday, the board meeting.
Just, I don't have a calendar for me. I'm good. We got two weeks in this month.
But the board is already gonna approve the next year.
Proposed expenditures, sorry, under approved.
Perfect.
Twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Expenditures. And then Haley, as far as I, I mean, it's just the application for um, cost of application for the county of San Luis land use.
Well, that would be one of several. I'm not sure.
Yeah, we don't need, yeah.
But she was asking me about.
Will there be any attachments that we need to include in the agenda? Just an agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
Verification of the, the line item is known by everyone then? I mean, it's in.
I can include them, the budget.
Yeah, I do that.
That was abroad.
All right, so Thursday at eight AM.
Can't wait.
I can look up. I'll look up trash cans.
So you'll have a little, a little presentation of some stuff we can.
Thank you. Imagine. Yeah, you have to get big trees, the open space. Like presenting, so printing maps, that kind of stuff.
You could also include that.
Yeah, so costs associated with um, what we want.
Encumber a certain amount because unless you know how much it's gonna cost.
Right.
You're gonna have to ask Carlos how big it's.
I, my brother did it. Oh, no, it's a new map. I did too. I, I, I can, I can find out. Yeah, okay.
She can find out.
I thought your brother did. He's, dude, well, he's done that historically, done that. So and he is a GIS mapper, so he can.
All right, sorry that went so long.
But she's the designated.
Yeah.
I'm excited. See, thank you. Personally, I just think it's really important for our community to see pros in action, not just pros in action by talking, but pros in action by seeing.
Any money since I've been here.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Are you gonna call the meeting?
Uh, meeting is adjourned. Uh, meeting is adjourned.